Hi everyone, once again I want to welcome you to yet another episode of the Cap Talk Show. And my name is Yan. First of all, I want to thank you guys for watching us and liking our videos and commenting. All comments are welcome, as if they're productive and like they're going to add something to our non-funny comments.
We still also welcome negative criticism, there is very space for it, you know?
Okay, guys, don't forget you can catch the Cap Talk Show on Connect TV. By subscribing to Connect TV Uganda, you hit the notification button so that you don't miss out on any of our awesome videos. And today, I'm seated with a gentleman here and on my right, we have our very own Sula Manthi Tungole and Marvin here. So, you're welcome guys. Today, we are going to talk about some, a topic that is a kind of, I don't know. I don't know how to categorize it, but it is so interesting and I think it is so good to talk about. We're going to talk about the impacts of early boarding school life on our lives. And I want to start by asking my colleagues, would you advise someone to take their child or children to boarding section at an early age? We're talking about the pre-primary, is it pre-primary, like baby classes, early-early classes? And I'm going to start with Mr. Sula on my right here to tell us his opinion on that.
Alright, thank you so much. It's an honor for me to be here on the Cap Talk Show and I'm very pleased and amazed to meet all of you. Now, boarding school has its own pros and cons, but talking about early life, there are various reasons. First of all, we need to understand why people choose to take their children to boarding school. Long ago, I think, I seem to be older than all of you, but I remember when time came and wanted to choose whether the child would go to boarding or to stay in a day section, it would be based on reasons like maybe they needed their children to learn something at school. They need, maybe good schools then were quite far from the city centre. So you would find that, for example, I'd give an example of a school like Gayaza, Gayaza Junior. Gayaza has become quite near now because roads have been connected and it's quite easier to connect to places. But 10 years ago, guys are used, when you spoke of Gayaza, then it would be like you're talking of a place that's very far away. Because people were staying in Tebe, around Tebe Road. We didn't have people staying in areas of Chisasi, Chanda, these were villages. But talking of Gayaza now, if I started driving now, I'll be in Gayaza in 20 minutes or 30 minutes, there's no traffic. So reasons then for taking children to boarding school were based on valid, strong reasons. But speaking from an experience of teaching, the main reasons why parents choose to take their children to boarding school now is they don't have time to pick them from school every day, to take them in the morning, pick them in the evening. So they don't have time to do that. So you find that the reasons they're giving for sending their children to boarding primary schools are not quite valid to me as someone who has experience in dealing with young people. So I think defining early age is we're talking of maybe 5 to 10 years. At this stage, this child is still very young, this is my opinion. This child is still very, very, very young. And remember, the child learns so much from their parents. They need to be around mommy and daddy, they need to learn their first words from mommy and daddy. They need to learn how to pick up their plates when they've finished eating. These small, small things that they need to be taught at home such that around 11, 12 years, they have been prepared mentally and psychologically to go and deal with 1,500 other young people. Because boarding school has no limit, you're going to take your child to a school that has 1,500 younger people and psychologically, trust me out of experience, are going to be damaged. There are very many things they're going to go through and have not been prepared for them mentally and they're going to damage their mental wellbeing. So I think personally, I don't know government policies, but I know countries around Uganda like Rwanda, it's not even possible to take someone to primary school or pre-primary when they're still that young. So parents are doing it because they're shifting their responsibilities to schools, they don't have time. How can you not even have time to pick your own child? How can you not have time to take your own child to school? So the reasons are not valid as a counselor, as a psychologist, they're not valid. Because 5, 10 years later, you're going to be paying for the consequences of this child you took to school at an early age. And I've just given you some of those things. So I think it wouldn't be advisable. But in other cases, we see, I don't want to base on one side, there are those that will give you the reasons and they'll be valid. But for me, speaking from a background of teaching, there are very many challenges that young people need to be prepared for before you take them out there to interface with other. Your child is going to interface with a boy or a girl from Sudan and their cultures and norms are different. 3, 5, 7, 8 years, this child is still young. There's so much they need to learn, so, so much. And learning it from school and not home is the worst thing. So how it's supposed to be is the child is supposed to be prepared from home first, taught the basic things at home. Then when you push them to school, they at least have the basics. They know how to deal with other people, they've been taught how to associate. But this child doesn't even know how to associate with other people yet. So probably they're going to find a hard time sharing, being kind to other young people, being compassionate. They'll always be emotional, it's because they have missed out at that love that is supposed to get that preparation from their parents. So that, I'll give my opinion and say that I don't think it's a good idea to take kids to... I had, I saw the discussion on Twitter, it was ongoing, but I don't think it's a good idea for me personally as someone who comes from the background of teaching. Yeah, that's my opinion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sula. So let me have Marvin's opinion on that. Would you advise someone to take their child at an early age for boarding?
Okay, thank you Yan, and once again hello our viewers, my name is Marvin. Now, in my view, I think, just like Mr. Sula stated, I think early boarding wasn't really a case back then, yeah? But we are seeing it on a rise of recent, yeah? You know, when that period of going back to school comes, you watch people's statistics and you see a kid standing with a mattress that's even taller than them, yeah? But they're going to school. And this kid is probably 6, 7 and I don't think that it's a coincidence. Me, I think, I have like maybe two reasons why I think there's a race in early boarding for kids nowadays. One, back then, we had parents, let me say, are mothers who are housewives, yeah? So it's like, these people according to the society, were supposed to just be there and take care of the what? Of the kids and then the father's job was to go and fend for it?
Money.
But nowadays, we have career wives, yeah? I mean, we've gone to campuses where we have like, there's a number of girls and the cost is actually bigger than that of the boys, yeah? And these are women that are going to get out in this space and they're going to be having the same aspirations as this boy who is supposed to be the father and they're going to have probably occupy jobs in places of work that are really so demanding, yeah? And then when they are into that space and they probably enter to marry, they get the kid. They'll feel like, due to the, there's that period where we had cases of house helps torturing these kids, yeah? So for a mother who is actually working, a career wife, would feel like it would be safer for their kid to be at school than to stay at home with a house of they barely know or they can't really hold accountable in such situations. But you know, when you go to school and then you find your kid probably, you know, with some bruises or something, like you can't hold the other school accountable. So I think the reason why most of the parents nowadays resort to that is because maybe their careers are demanding and mostly for the mothers, the very people we thought were really going to, you know, take up these roles. And then the second reason I'll attribute that to is there's this delusion of boarding section like correlates with good grades. Like boarding section, when a kid is in boarding section, like by default, you expect what? Better grades. And schools, schools just, just, I don't know, it's just disturbing when teachers use that as if it's a marketing language. You know, when you go to like those remedial exams, like you go to maybe after midterm video, something like that, class days? And then the parent is going through their grades and then as a concerned parent, you'd be like, okay, why? Why, but why are the grades like this? You understand, asking the class teacher. And the solution the class teacher would render in is like, you know what? Give us that kid, bring him to what? To the boarding section and you save what? An upgrade in the performance. And for them, it's like a marketing what? A marketing language. But it's sad to say that there are schools that are day section and they perform well, you understand? Like, like generally at the school, it's purely day, day and they are really performing well. And their scholars, kids are doing what? Are commuting, but then they have better grades and thinking. And remember, we're talking about kids below the age of 10 or something, yeah? Because for example, when I was doing my P7, yeah, I was in boarding. And then I had my friend Farouk Shazam, yeah? He was at Kaboja, Kaboja is a day school, yeah? But then the guy scored 4, 4 aggregates, yeah? I was, I was in boarding, I got 8, you understand? So I don't, I don't see the logic in that, you understand? Yeah, so for me, I think those two reasons are the very, the major reasons as to why there's a race in early what? Early boarding life for these kids. But then, I would say for me personally, I wouldn't really advise somebody to really take a kid who is below the age of maybe 10 or 12, yeah? Because there's somewhere I read and it's like the Kenyan parliament for it had a consensus of at least the earliest age a kid should really go into boarding is should be 12, yeah? We haven't had the chance to get that from our legislators, yeah? But in Kenya, they did that, the parliament sat down and maybe they, they had their thought on such an issue. And for them, their consensus was 12 years, yeah? But for me personally, I don't think it would be really, I wouldn't advise somebody to take their kid into boarding life at that age.
Okay, thank you so much, Marvin. As for me, just like my colleagues here, I personally wouldn't advise anyone to take their child in boarding section at an age because it is said charity begins at home. So if you didn't teach me something from home, there's no way I'm going to do it at school. Because these guys at school focus more on studies than these other day-to-day things that you have to do. Clean yourself, like tell you how you're supposed to do things, they don't give too much attention on that. So for me, I think you shouldn't like take a child below 10 years in boarding because there are school buses, there are these people who have cars that can have friends who actually have neighbors who take their children in, they're in day, but someone comes and picks them and brings them back. So if you have no time for taking your child to school, you can pay the school bus or get someone to help you drop your children to school and bring them back. Because this, by all ways, this child will need your help as a parent or as a mother or father at such age. This, this is the age where they need you the more to be in their life. So I can't advise anyone to take their child in boarding section at that age because it is not good. You know, like at times of boarding school, you would be taken in boarding school, but you, you, my dad was so scared of me being in school, he would come see me every weekend. And I was older, I was in P7, so if he was scared of me being in school, you're not going to know what is happening to me. You need someone to talk to, but you fear these people because you're not used to them and you don't think they'll understand you the way your parent would like have understood you. So for me, it is, I know, I wouldn't advise anyone to take a very little kid to school for those reasons. Because you have to teach your child how he's or he or she is supposed to behave in public or like at such ages where they say these kids learn things faster. So if you don't teach your child yourself, I don't think there's anyone who can help you teach your child better than you. Because I can't do something that you're telling me to do yet, my mother doesn't tell me to do it. It's basically you who is going to teach me and then be like, hey, my mom also tells me to do this, maybe it is good. So it is always good to take kids in boarding when they're able to take care of themselves, like cleanliness and help themselves out, not leaving them to the school, yeah? And something else I want us to talk about is, I want us to talk about the challenges that are involved in that boarding life. Because I'm very sure, besides the very good part of being in boarding, like academically or something, there are very many challenges that are involved in this. These kids face a lot of things while at school without their parents or someone to talk to or something. So I want us to talk about those challenges that they face. And I want to start with Mr. Sula.
Thank you so much. Before I get to that point, Marvin talked about something very important, the issue of relating grades and students being in boarding school. First of all, I want to thank our friends at Topoith Menthol Uganda who are the sponsors of the show. And at Topo, one of the things we believe in is to not judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree. Albert Einstein tells us that if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it leaves its whole life believing that it's stupid. What the quote simply means is that every individual person or every individual creature has its own abilities. A fish was made to live in water. But if you brought the fish out and asked it to climb a tree and it fails, it might leave its whole life believing that it's stupid. Yet it can actually do better in water. I think time has come for us to understand that there are other abilities that students have besides getting aggregate 4, besides pushing them to have aggregate 4, to get 8 in 8, to have 20 points at 6. What we are simply doing is we are pumping knowledge into their heads and we are letting their creativity die out. Because we are living in a world where the challenges and the problems that the world is facing are quite seeming, are quite different from what the world was facing 20 years ago. 20 years ago, the challenges we had were communicating.
Mobility.
Mobility, but now we are looking for solutions, the world is full of problems. We need critical thinkers, you understand? Need people who think fast and create solutions to problems. Pushing them to get aggregate 4, 10 or 20 points is simply going to give you satisfaction as a parent that your child got 20 points, but then what after that? Because every year we have about 40,000 people graduating from universities, but what are they doing? Nothing. So in other countries where people have taken a look at this and analyzed it, they're actually performing better. Don't go far away, just go to Rwanda and see what is happening there. I don't want to say that whatever is happening in order is okay, but we have something we can look at and say, this is what we are doing. So the idea of saying that children in boarding school perform better, that doesn't work for me. Because I know so many kids who are in this school and perform better than those in boarding school, like Marvin said. So I think time has come for the government to put its focus on the future of young people in this country. For them to understand that what we are doing now might not impact. And the thing that I don't seem to understand is that the impact of what they're doing will come when they're not even here. The guys who are making these policies are not going to be around in 30 years, they're going to be dead. Some of them are 50 years, some of them are 60, 70 years, they're going to be dead, they'll be in their graves. And our children and our siblings will live to the impacts of those decisions. So I think we use the platform to raise a voice and say, hey, I can be a very good artist and I can be poor at math. I can be a very good singer. I don't want you to tell me that Beyonce is a failure. I wouldn't want you to tell me that Stephen Curry is a failure. I don't want you to tell me that Picasso was a failure, you get what I'm saying? So there's so many Picassos in these schools and you're pumping them with knowledge, you're telling them to wake up at 4am who is in boarding school, they should study. A kid who is 5 years is being forced to wake up at 4am in a boarding school to go to class and sleep up to 7, when their lesson is going to start. Why don't you let them rest, sleep up to 7, wake up at 8, study until 4pm? That time is enough. These brains are still young, they need to do what? To develop. And there are so many things around them, around their surroundings that they need to learn. So I think the discussion is broader than that, but the interest of time, we can't exhaust everything here. But personally, I think the time has come, we need to talk about more than grades. For me, I want to participate in a discussion where we are talking about how do we empower people to make, how do we have young people, how do we support them to become critical thinkers? Identify problems and create solutions for them. Not a discussion where we are telling parents that boarding school is better than, you get what I'm saying? Yeah, so that is a very, I think the next time you guys should have a topic where you're talking about impact of grades versus individual student abilities, that's something that's very key and important. So one of the challenges, if you take your child to boarding school when they're still young, you're going to first follow these things. Number one, these kids are going to miss out on a lot of important things they should have learned from you. You're pushing them out and the world is going to teach them what the world wants to teach them. For example, if they go to boarding school and the first person they learn is a thief and they, and they, and that becomes your child's friend. Before you have taught them the disadvantages of picking something that doesn't belong to them, they're going to spend a whole year with this child who is a thief and they're going to probably pick that. So before you, you, before you have them back home and you understand that they have picked a habit, before you complain, remember what you did, you pushed them and that's what they learnt there. So you're going to have kids picking up things that you wouldn't want them to pick up, but they're picking up because that's what you wanted, you pushed them out. And then the ability of a learner to speak out on things that have, you see, this is a challenge. That's why I have so many cases of depression these days. There are so many people dealing with issues, but they can't come out and speak. So now, this kid is in school, the teacher is always tough, they hate, the class teacher is walking around with a stick. But this kid is having a wound somewhere and he or she can't come out to say, mommy, since you're not there, I can't come and say, teacher, I have a problem. Because the teacher says, you see, in school, they teach kids to sit in straight rows, raise their hands when they want to speak. These things are good, but for a child who is 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, they don't need that. They need you to let them speak freely. So you can teach them that when you have a problem later in life, it's okay to open up. But at this age, these teachers have been told to have a stick and move on with it. So kids are going to keep whatever is hurting them and that is something you don't want later when they grow up. Because these are the cases of depression we're dealing with today. And then lastly, you as a parent, you're missing out on a very important stage of your child. Because at 3, 4, 5 years, it's time for you to understand your child, what do they want, what makes them happy, what makes them sad? How do they deal with sadness, how do they deal with happiness, how do you react? There are parents who will tell you that for me, when my child is quiet, I know there's something wrong. There's something they're spoiling. When my child is quiet, they are probably sick. When my child is quiet, they are probably going through something. So how are we going to know all these things when, when, when you're pushing that responsibility away? So finally, we are chasing money, we are in a society that's elevated women to the status of career people, as Marvin said. I'm not saying I'm against that, I love it so much, but as parents, because first we are parents, then we become CEOs, then we become managing directors, then we become company directors, but first we are mothers. And as a mother, your responsibility is for your children first. So before you rush to catch the 7am meeting, you probably spend a whole week without seeing your kids because they're in boarding school and you're waiting to go to VD to see them. So kids spend more time at school because they spend nine months in school and only spend three with you. So for 90, for, 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 for all the nine months, you probably don't know what's happening in their lives and you're only going there to see them once every month. So the challenges are many, we can't exhaust them here, but those are some of them.
Okay, thank you so much, Sula. So Marvin, give us the challenges that you, you know, each being that you are also wanting in boarding school. So please share the challenges with us.
For me, I think one of the challenges could be, you know, when a parent is setting off a kid for boarding sections, some parents tend to of course give them one or two lectures, you understand? On how they should actually behave when they're out there. But then I'll, I'll just, I'll just compare this life of a kid going into a boarding section at 5 or 6 to that of a 23-year-old or 24-year-old who is now moving out of their what? Their father's home, you understand? There's that shock of, you know, getting integrated into that kind of a new setting, you understand? Now, this is a kid who has been probably mommy this, mommy that, daddy this, daddy that, you understand? They expect you to reach out and provide, you understand? In case they have some trouble or stuff like that. They are growing up in a situation where they're used to what? Sharing, you understand? Like you're on the table, the mom passes what? Something to their kid, you understand? These are things that probably come easy at an early age, yeah? Maybe you do it just as a parent, but the kid is learning, you understand?
It has a lot of impact.
Exactly. But then when you, it's a different thing in boarding, you understand? These guys just give you a limited number of what? Resources, like a box of biscuits, this, 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 that, you understand? So when the kid probably decides to go with that kind of mentality of, hey, when, when mommy's probably picking juice from the fridge, she's going to do what? Pour it in two glasses, you understand? Mine and hers. If she tries to do that in boarding, she's going to be out of what? Of her resources in the first week, you understand? Secondly, some guys don't even ask, they take, you understand? If she thinks, okay, it's okay for these people to have access to my things, you understand? Just like what's done at home, you understand? These guys are going to abuse that. They are going to take steel, the bulbs, the pens, the juice, the biscuits, the grab, you understand? And the kid in just a one week's time will be out of what? Of grab. And for you as a parent, of course, by the time you send this kid in school, what you have in your mind is, are you equipped that kid with enough what? Grab or resources that will take him until VD? And then in the first week, this kid is out of what? All your things, you understand? And then surprisingly, how this kid comes back home and they are so territorial about their things, you understand? Something they will be doing with their colleagues or their young ones, which they have learned from what? From school, the hard way, you understand? Maybe the young brother or the young sister is reaching out for a cookie from what? From their plate or something and we just push away the what? The little sibling. But that's because in boarding or in the dormitory, she learnt that, you know what? These guys take advantage of what? Such situations, you understand? So she becomes selfish because for her to survive in dormitory.
You have to be selfish.
You need to be selfish, you understand? And then those are the same traits she's going to carry home, you understand? And then she'll impose that on the younger sibling, who is probably 2 or 3, yeah? Yeah, so for me, I think that's one of the challenges that these kids face. They're going to get that, that shock of a new setting of, hey, okay, this is not how things are done, you understand? The same shock that this person is going to get who's just moving out of their father's house and like, oh, okay, this is what the real world is. So this kid is learning the real survival instincts at an early age, which he doesn't need, what they don't need. And then secondly, for me, I think it has a lifetime or a long-term like effect, a psychological effect, like mentally, yeah? For some kids at an early age, they wouldn't understand why daddy or mommy decided to take me in boarding. Did I do something to them? Because it will seem like it's a punishment, exactly. Like you're just sending me away, you understand it? I have some friend of mine who was being taken to Chibuli as a senior one. Actually, that was even 13 years, yeah? But the guy cried when the parents what? Were leaving. And then... But the guy cried when the parents what? Were leaving. And then. When it came to, uh, like coming back home, yeah, the guy came back with the whole pocket money. Like the old money, like, he didn't know what to use.
The money for?
That for, you understand? Because he had grown up in a setting where they pack this for you, you go to school, you come back, they pack. So he hadn't actually at any point thought, I can use this money maybe to do what?
Buy something for that, can't you?
Yeah, but the 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 first day, the guy cried out his what? He's sad, like, did I do something wrong? Why do you have to take me? Yeah, why do you have to take me in boarding? Because it felt like they're just pushing them away. So for me, I feel like that that at an early age, it gives them a long-term like psychological effect, yeah? And just like Mister Sula mentioned, some of these kids, because they're used to reporting to their mothers. Yeah, what's troubling them?
Yeah.
They won't feel, uh, the same way to express their troubles to a stranger. You understand? Because however much you're saying, they have probably a custodian, a matron or whoever, who's going to be looking after them. We're talking about a population of about three hundred students. There is one person cannot give them the same attention they would have received from what? From their mothers or their fathers, yeah? So however much these custodians or matrons really, uh, try. To extend the same, uh, love or care a father or mother would have, it just can't equate to that. They would have received from their what? And then, for the for the sake of maybe, uh, imposing order and disciplining students. Some of these people tend to be strict. And for the kid, they interpret that as being rude, you understand? Maybe it's not the intention of the matron to bark, you understand, but it's just for keeping them in check, you understand? But then for that kid, they're going to interpret that as what? Rudeness and unwellcoming, you understand? So when the kid probably feels some fever or a headache. Or, you know, constipation, odorous, anything, you understand? They won't feel, uh, like the same way to express their troubles to this person because they feel like, okay, this person is not that welcoming. Yeah, just like how mom would have. So it ends up like, by the time these people realize that there's something wrong with this kid, when it's actually even late. Because the kid has spent like two days without, you know, mentioning any things to the people in charge. And then the only thing they're going to realize is when this kid is actually now, you know, completely off or down. Where the sickness has really hit the kid down. And then that's when they'll be like, I think something is wrong. Okay, when it's when it's really, you know what? Notable, maybe the kid has vomited or something like that. But then that would be something debatable when they are what? Back at home. Because when the kid feels like, you know, some, you know, stomach issues, they feel free to express it to mom, like, mom. Yeah, my stomach, my stomach. And the mother would decide whether we go to the pharmacy, buy a syrup or something like that for the kid. Which one be the case what? For this kid, so. And that that same thing just grows into this kid, even at a what? At a higher stage, even when they come back home, chances are, they won't feel like it's necessary.
To to share.
To report what's troubling me to this person, yeah? Yeah, so for me, I think those are the challenges that probably these these people face when they go to boarding section at an early age.
Okay, thank you so much, Marvin. As for me, I think, uh, this, uh. This baby, this, okay, let me call them babies. I'm talking about before one baby class, like from baby to P four, P five. These guys have, when you take them to school, you maybe give them to the warden, they call warden or matrons. You give, you you give, you actually, as as in boarding, where they would give everything of yours to the matron. Like when you're a kid, you don't you don't you don't have actually anything in your suitcase, bit soft, bit what? So you're going to, you you're going to 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 go, maybe you have given you soft to use for a week, or maybe someone steals it. And when you go to ask for some other one, this woman is going to bark at you. So you're going to to ask your friends. If they fail to give you, you just maybe like, let me pick a reason and then bring it back, which is not good. You get. So these these people that you give your children, uh, also have children to take care of. So you don't. You don't think these people are going to take care of your child the way you would have taken care of your child. And some other thing I I I I I noticed when I was in boarding is, there's one time, I happened to be in boarding section with my my little brother. He, there's one time where they were in dormitory, so he, there was, there are these guys who come to 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 school when they're old, you could be in the same class. But they're older than you. So this guy was trying to to ask over to take the kid's things. So my brother tells the guy, why, what's your service in the morning? I'm like, why are you taking the kid's things? So this guy caught my brother, now I'm hitting on the decker. Until now, my brother's tooth is half. So. This guy was hurt, and then he came crying to me, I can't do anything to him. Even though you go and report to the teacher, he's not going to bring back your tooth. So it's already broken, there's nothing. But he was trying to tell this guy, why are you taking the kid's thing? The kid is crying, but because for you want to take the it, the it's. You don't, you don't care, like, he'll definitely keep quiet after. So. These guys wouldn't tell this to our parents because what would they do? Your 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 mommy is going to find you and then you'll be like, I fell down. Because even if you tell them, they hit me, they're not going to to change anything. So you'd be like, if he was in, maybe home, he would be okay. He would be very okay. You would. I don't know. There are very many things that happen to these kids, but I could, I would say that these things happen to them because. You give them to people to take care of, to take care of them, well, because you can't tell me you're going to to give me money. Like, because they rarely give these kids money when you're young. They give all the things to 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 these people and you're limited. You're limited, you'd be like, they give you, they, like, I don't know how to say it, but these guys in school. Have not, you could come back for lunch, you want something, but this person is not here. So you're going to starve, you're going to be hungry, until the person comes back. And that these things are over, you you're going to make a line. Sometimes they don't separate where you're in baby class or where you what. So these guys are all told, you're below here, mom, how are you going to get food? These guys sometimes fail to get, they fail to get food. And they have to 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 go and asking for these other ones who have food. If you're mercy, merciful enough to give them, if you don't.
Is, um, when you're enrolled into boarding, they get probably a student from a higher class. Who's like your immediate, uh, caretaker.
And those are some schools. Me, I was in a school where they, you don't know, no, they don't give you anyone. So you just have. You maybe you're, if you're good, you get some child, you're going to find like a child that he doesn't know how to clean you himself. Like, you clean them and tell them, you do this, do this. If that's if you, you 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 care though, if you don't care, just go. These teachers are not going to tell them, maybe they're going to find them, then they bark at them and tell them, you're going to find like a kid crying because I barked at him. But it is not his fault. He's he's he didn't grow up like where they would tell him, you have to do this and this. He has learnt whatever he's learning from here. So if he hasn't learnt that, I have to clean myself using a hanky. You're going to find this guy's shirt all full of, uh, or mucus or saliva because maybe he has flu, he doesn't have a hanky, he has nothing. So if if you didn't, they didn't tell it to you at home that you have to clean yourself this and this and this, how are you going to learn it from school? Because this is a thing that they rarely tell you. And some other thing is, uh, some. Some, some, okay, people at school, I went, I went to school, you could be having a sickness. That maybe I could have a problem that is, uh, let's say asthma or something, or sinusus. You're going to wake up one time, they tell you to go for morning prep. You sometimes don't know how to deal with that, like sinusus, you're going to be sneezing, you're going to be. Not okay. You don't, there's no answer at that time at four, she's sleeping. So you're going to be there dying. This 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 sickness is going to worsen. But if you stay in dormitory, they'll find you there and beat you. So if you're home, if if these, these are things that wouldn't have happened when you're home with your parents. Your parents will know that you have this problem, they'll give you medicine, they'll provide for you. At some some schools, this this, uh, this, uh. First aid things are not there. So you get a problem, they'll be like, go, go and put on a sweater or go, go to bed. And rest. When you feel better, you will come. That is not going, that doesn't mean that my 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 problem has so has been solved. I've got to stay sick, I haven't gotten medication, and this sickness is still going to be there. It's not going to go because you've told me to go and sleep. No, it's just going to be there and it is going to grow and grow. By the time my parents maybe realize it, it is very, like, it is too late. They can't, they just have to spend more money. Maybe if if they hurried, they hurried, they would have spent less. And maybe if they had time for me, they would, they would, they would no- notice it and take, take action. So, I don't know, there are very many challenges that are faced in different schools. Some schools do care, but the little ones, some don't, but still, you're not sure that if this person, you've given the child to take care of them. They will surely take care of them the better way. You're going to find this child is sick, but the person who is supposed to take care of them is in a candidate class. So he has to be in class all the time. So, uh, there are very many challenges that we can't all talk about. We can't like put them out and they get them, there's always something that happens each at at every time. So I just don't think these children should be taken like taken to school. So I advise my dear parents and, how can I call them? Guardians, is that? There are people who are taking care of children that are not their own children. So I advise you take care of your children at this early age and maybe give them to the school. When you feel like they can take good care of themselves.
Maybe Shan, uh, something, just like we we realized and we acknowledge the fact that. There are those people now who are into careers and it's a time issue. What could be the alternatives for these people?
They could use the, the, that, like I, like I said, the school shutters, the school, the people who who. Actually, I see people advertising themselves, if you want a school, money, a car to take your children to school. Like, they put their numbers, you could act like you could contact these people. Or if you're so busy, but you have a car, you can get someone. To help you drop the children at school and pick them up. If you don't have a car, you could still use a border. The border guys you can trust to take your child, but it's, I can't, it it can help you out. And the school. Let, like, these boarding schools that are around town, they usually have cars. That pick children from home very early in the morning and drop them back in the evening. So if you feel you're so busy at work and your work is, uh, is what you take to be, um, big to you. You could use the money you get from work to pay for this child to be taken and brought brought back, be brought back home. Yeah, and that is it from from us today. And I'd ask my colleagues to give their closing remarks. On the topic we had today, and I'm going to start with Mister Sula again.
Okay, yeah, me, me still say, uh, I don't think for a child who is three, four years, their problem should be solving. Mathematics issues and finding the value of X and Y. They are early learning centers, let's take children to early learning centers, there's so much they learn in these early learning centers. What they need to learn is about how they can be compassionate, how they can be kind. How they can share, how they can communicate, how they can write, basic things. Stop impacting them with a lot of things that they don't need at that stage. So I I I say, and I want to ask all the parents out there, please don't take your children to boarding school when they're still young. Personally, I think the appropriate age for boarding school would be thirteen years. But anybody below thirteen is not fit for them to go to boarding school.
Thank you so much, Mister Sula. Marvin?
Uh, for me, I think for a parent out there, before you take, uh, your your child. To the boarding section, I think there are some boxes that you need to tick, you as a parent. I I think first and foremost, you should, uh. Confirm whether your kid can easily relate with others, yeah? We have kids who are really always in their head, you understand, and they're not truly social, yeah? So such a kid at that early age is going to be really, really a jungle. Out there in those dormitories for them, yeah? If they can't truly relate easily with others, it's going to be a jungle for them. And then, secondly, I think you should be aware that you should tick that box that, okay, my kid can do what? Fetch their own water, because sometimes you find some water supplies, uh, being at a particular distance from where the dormitories are. Or even when they are close, the the kids need like containers or buckets or, uh, jerrycans to get that water. Exactly. So you should be, you should be knowing that my kid can actually lift a five-liter jerrycan, in case they need that water. Yeah, there are other things that you just need to tick, like basic things, like can they wash for themselves? Can they bathe, uh, themselves? You know, those things, you understand? So in case you have your list right and you've ticked all those boxes, then you can go ahead. And then for the, for the alternatives. I think, uh, we have, uh, some schools. Which are now doing like weekly boarding, uh, boarding sessions, yeah? So, uh, for example, is it Rainbow International? And then I can't, so a kid can stay like, uh, five days in school and then they are brought to you, uh, over the weekend. I think that's, that can be fair, you understand? Because you get to spend at least about six, six, six to eight days. A week with your kid, you understand? Yeah, I think that's fair. And then, uh, secondly. I know this is a far thought for most of the parents, but like it or not, uh, there's this a lot of digitalization that's taking place, yeah? If you feel like, uh, this kid is actually, uh, not really going to perform, uh, well. Maybe, uh, just in there or something, you can, you can utilize these online classes that. Right now, we have teachers, actually, because of the COVID. Actually left that setting of school and they're doing a personal tutorials like with what? So if you can get one and maybe that can be convenient for you, you can enroll your kid to one of those. If they are still on in that early age, you understand? Depending on the curriculum or the syllabus that you intend to have your kid cover. And then I think that's better than just throwing them in, in a what? Life of boarding, that's a jungle for this kid, yeah? Yeah, so for me, uh, those are my parting remarks and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much for guys. As for me, I think, um, as a parent, you have to do your parental work. You have to to teach your child and make them who you want them to be in the future by your own. If you can't teach something to your child, there's no one who's going to teach you, who is going to show them or help them out on that. So, all in all, it is you as a parent or a father or a mother to to teach your child. What and how to deal with certain things in life. And if you think they are right, then you have a right to take them to boarding. Because if they can help themselves out, make sure you clean, lay your bed, like, basically. The the cleanliness matters because these kids get sick basically at school because their their aura isn't clean and they don't take care of themselves. Besides the academic part of it. So you have to make sure your child is. Is so, can I say, ready, fit to go in boarding school. So me as me, I don't, I think the child is supposed to be in boarding, I think over in secondary school. Secondary school. But because by that time, they know how to lay their bed, they they know how to wash their 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 clothes, they know how to. The basic things that are supposed to be taught to them at home. And some other thing is, uh, I I advise. Some, okay, I advise parents, basically, those who don't do office work to encourage their children. You could be like, maybe you work in school or somewhere else, you teach your child how to, how you, how business goes. Because I I could be not very bright in class, but have brains that can help me succeed in that. Well, you don't have to be so much into school like.
I think, I think that's the only advantage of boarding life that you even talked about. Like, boarding just, should I say, makes you street wise. Yeah? Like, it just opens your mind or just exposes you to.
Only class. You don't, you don't, you don't, you you they're just going to teach you, teach you things that is. They're not going to teach you how to start up your own business, how you're going to do, how to deal, how you're going to handle people in business or. I don't know, I just advise parents to 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 teach their children these other things that they may not be taught in in a, in school. Because I may not be academically, uh, successful, but I can, I can do something. Out of my, like, I'd be like, I can create something. They're very people who are, like Mister Sula said, artists. You have, they have talents, but they can't, they're not given a chance to expose their talents at school. So for me, I advise parents to talk, to talk, parents to talk to their children. And maybe that can help them out. Be free to your child and that can be done when the child is there with you. Yeah, so thank you guys so much for watching Connect Cup Talk and. And don't forget to subscribe to our social media platforms, Facebook and Twitter at Connect TV Uganda. TikTok and Instagram at Connect TV U G. Or send a message on WhatsApp number zero eight, zero seven eight two. One eight zero one eight five. And you're very free to comment in the comment section. In case you feel like there's something that you want to share with us. Thank you so guys for watching. And once again, I'm Shan. And that is from us today. See you next time. Bye. And that is from us today. See you next time. Bye.